Thank you for joining us for a meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. We will begin today's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. We will be led today by Supervisor Valero.
Ready?
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Item number one on today's agenda is Board of Supervisors Matters, and we'll begin to the far right, and that's with Supervisor Townsend.
Is that a double entendre?
What's that?
Anyway, thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate that, and good morning, everyone. Just to report on a couple of things that happened this last week, on Wednesday, the 23rd, I attended the Tulare County Employee Retirement Association meeting. As a member of, as a new member of the Pension Ad Hoc Committee, attended it just to be in the room. And very informative as the, as the board goes back and forth about what direction to take in the future. There's some challenges out there with, with retirement and our pension obligation bonds, and there was just a great discussion regarding all of those things. And some decisions were, were made in the room to help with the adjustments to, to just get a better handle on it. And so I'm encouraged by the, they continue to be fiscally conservative on the way that those things are moving forward with the retirement. So I was glad to be a part of that. And then on Thursday, the 24th, took a tour of the fire damage areas up Highway 190. And Chief Norman, Battalion Chief Marquez guided us in that tour. Supervisor Valero joined, and Assemblyman Mathis, along with Perry Fenzel from Congressman McCarthy's office, and Jack Stout with Congressman Nunes's office. And we took a look at the, the most affected communities up 190. Lots and lots and lots of devastation on that side of the mountain. Many, many homes destroyed. Chief Norman will give us another report here this morning. But I do appreciate the opportunity to go up, even though it's very sad to, to see. I think it was good that all of us got a chance to see that personally. And there's going to be lots of work to be done over the next years to, to help with all the losses that have occurred. So I did, I do thank Chief Norman for the, the tour, and also for the continued updates on how the fire is going, and they are getting a good handle on it, which is great to hear. And so also that same day, I just want to thank our chief of staff, Tammy, for taking the Government Affairs Committee meeting that was scheduled for the Porterville Chamber of Commerce. So she stood in for me on that Zoom conference, and I appreciate that, giving me the opportunity. On Saturday, the 26th, I went down to, also Chief Norman asked, and Joanne Bear with Tulare County Fire Ask it, I would help with a, a short video segment regarding the fires and regarding folks wanting to go back up into the mountains and to, to see their properties, and just cooperation with fire officials, and getting a handle on it, sort of a safety video. And so I appreciate the opportunity to do that, and I went out to the, to the incident command out at, out at the fairgrounds to make that video. And on the way, and on the way back, and in the morning before, really encouraged just to see what was happening in Washington DC. I don't know how much it was covered. I happened to catch it on a couple of channels. But a couple of historic things happening on the mall. There was a prayer walk that was hosted by Franklin Graham, Billy Graham's son, on one end of the Capitol Mall with, with tens of thousands of people. And then on the other end of the mall, seemingly not knowing that, that this was going on, was another group led by Rabbi Jonathan Khan with probably tens of thousands of people on the other end. And so it was real encouraging to see these, you know, 50, 60, 70, 80, 90,000 people probably out there praying, worshiping. Nothing was burned. Nobody was shot. Nobody was arrested. It was just a bunch of people from all different denomination, all different walks of life, all different demographic, out there just lifting up leaders, political leaders, especially those in, in our nation's capital. So very encouraged to, to see that on Saturday. And then Saturday evening, still going back to sort of the fire, some, some of my friends up in Springville got together, and there's a lot of signs just thanking the firefighters for all that they're doing. And, and everybody lined the streets on Saturday evening at the shift change, and just yelled and screamed and clapped and waved flags and, and thank you signs for all of the firefighters coming out of the, out of the hills. And I had to, had to make a joke because there's also a lot of utility vehicles going up and down, and Caltrans vehicles going up and down. And, and I think as, as the, as the train of Caltrans vehicles came down and everybody was cheering for them, I, the thought occurred that's probably the first time anybody's ever cheered a Caltrans worker. So the community was really caught up in that, in thanks. But, but we are so appreciative of everybody that's working on this incident. And that's about all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Crocker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week I had the opportunity to, to visit our EOC and just see all the hard work that our county employees are putting in on, you know, not only have they, they've gone through multiple incidents over the last six months. And so the SQF is now the, the most recent and pressing. And just great to see all the different departments that are working together collaboratively. And the individuals in the EOC, they, they still have regular day jobs. They're still getting phone calls and emails about all the other work that needs to take place. And all, all the while, they're still trying to help provide services and, and support for what's going on with the, with the fire up the mountain. So that was great to see. Really appreciate Chief Norman taking me up to see some of the devastation that's, that's happened up, up the mountain. And just reiterates, you know, what we've been doing for many years, why we continue need to beat the drum to try and get better policies when it comes to forest health. And I, I think the, the focus on recovery, all, it's already beginning, and the fire's not completely out, but all, making great progress, that, that's going to be a new shift that we really haven't emphasized. I know Supervisor Worley talked about that from the standpoint of the pure fire. And, and looking at how, what do we want our mountains to be like moving forward? Do we want it to be some type of chaparral with White Thorn and, and Manzanita that's taking over in those burn scars? Or are we going to take some concerted effort to try and reestablish a healthy pine forest and conifer forest with, with all the different varieties? And I, and I think that most of us would like to see a healthy conifer forest with, with trees and helping out with, with wildlife and with recreation and all the other benefits that come from that. And so I, so that's going to be a huge effort to, to really push the feds to step up and to have a restoration plan, and to make sure that we secure dollars and that we have some action in restoring these areas. I know that there's restoration from a, from a community standpoint, and that's very important too. And I, I appreciate all the, all the things that our county departments are already doing to try and begin that process, whether it means expediting permits, whether it means working with local utilities to help with getting services back online, clearing roads up, all, all the necessary things that we don't necessarily think of that needs to happen in order for the 200-plus structures to be rebuilt. So appreciate that. There were lots of other fire updates this past week I participated with. Also a lot going on with the RCRC's CEO recruitment. And the only thing that I want to report for this upcoming week is on Friday, we've got the San Joaquin Valley Water Infrastructure Authority, we're having a meeting on Friday. And the primary thing is just to approve the annual budget and bylaws. We, last year, we, we moved away from a, a fees or dues based, or we reduced the amount tremendously. And so we got rid of our full-time staff. So we contract out, most of the staff work happens more or less on a volunteer, although it's not volunteer basis, by the participating counties, with Fresno County taking the lead. That's all I have.
All right. Supervisor Valero?
All right. Good morning and great day Tulare County. Last Wednesday, Denise England and I met with Senator Urtodol's office regarding East Arosi's water system. We continue to press for water equity and integrity for the residents of East Arosi. We are moving forward with progress as we have a meeting scheduled with the State Water Board Chair, Joaquin Escavell, in the coming weeks. Last Thursday, as mentioned by Supervisor Townsend, I had the opportunity to make my way into the 5th District to take a tour of the damage ravaged by the SQF complex fire. This experience definitely weighed heavy on my heart. And I too want to thank Chief Norman and Division Chief Pete Marcus for your help in organizing this tour. I came back home and just felt overwhelmed by all of the destruction and, as well as kind of that sadness that you see. But knowing that Tulare County is here to help wherever that may be and in whatever we can do. On Friday, I went to the Ivanhoe COVID-19 Drive-Thru Event. Thank you to Tulare County HHSA and the Community Cares Coalition for your tremendous work on this challenging endeavor. At least 150 families were served through the resources available and organizations present like SeaSet, United Way, Family Healthcare, Tulare Kings Hispanic Chamber, and Food Link, to name a few. Today, I will be giving an opening remarks on the, at the Fresno-Tulare Diabetes Virtual Symposium. The keynote speaker will be discussing a topic called "Engaging the Disengaged: Strategies for Promoting Behavior Change in Diabetes." This conversation will include motivations in diabetes self-care, effective self-management, and addressing problematic medication adherence and other self-management challenges. Looking forward to tomorrow's COVID-19 Drive-Thru Testing Event in Cutler, Arosi, from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM at the Arosi Memorial Hall. Also want to let you know that with only a few days left to go, I want to encourage everyone to fill out the 2020 census. As of 9/27/2020, California is at 68.9%. Tulare County is at 64.6% self-response rate, still below what we had in 2010. So again, encouraging all organizations to really just continue to do the trench work in order to get that information, so that way we can continue with our services and, and continue to, to have funding allocation that will support all of the various programmings that go on in our county. And then lastly, I had an interview with the Deputy Secretary of Appointments for the Governor's Office last Friday, and I believe it went very well. And the interview was for a local government seat on the California Volunteers Commission. Some of the responsibilities serving on this commission include approving grant-making policies, procedures, and funding proposals for national and community service. Advise and participate in the work of California volunteers, including policy, communication, and program decision-making and special initiatives. And then support California volunteers-funded programs by participating in insight visits and speaking at launch or graduation activities, among other commission duties. And we really need volunteers now more than ever, especially with what is going on in our state and world today. And so looking forward to hearing hopefully some good news, so that way I can not only represent the state, but more specifically the county as we go across Tulare, the state of California. So that is all I have, and thank you, Chair.
All right. Supervisor Shuckling?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week I had my CSAC California Counties Foundation meeting, and it was a short one. That was good. You didn't have to drive all the way to Sacramento for a 22-minute meeting. But nonetheless, the big thing was we renamed, I mentioned about the institute that we have. CSAC has the continuing education, and we changed the name. We voted to change the name to the CSAC William Bill Shiat Institute of Governmental Excellence. Bill, as we, many of us know, was the dean of institute and passed away suddenly this July and was really a champion for, for educating supervisors and staff to, to make us all better. So that was a nice thing to be able to do. On Friday, I had my San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority meeting, which is the Amtrak meeting. We administer administration of the Amtrak through the San Joaquin's. Ridership had been down quite a bit, of course, in April. It is going back up, and actually the San Joaquin is the highest percentage of ridership, which really goes to show the need of the San Joaquin rail for folks traveling throughout the Central Valley. Also, we had closed stations in Hanford, Fresno, Madera, and Merced. You could still catch the train there, but the stations were closed. Those stations will be opening back up on October 5th. They had a video, maybe next time I can share it. But it's a good video showing the precautions and what all that Amtrak is doing to keep people safe while they all are traveling on Amtrak. So the other thing is tomorrow, I will have my Tulare County Economic Development Corporation meeting. And then on Thursday, I will be zooming into my alma mater of Fresno State and talking to a class there, that I was actually a student in that class just a few years back. And so also mentioning Fresno State, I also want to give a congratulations to Dr. Joseph Castro, who was recently named Chancellor of the CSU System. Dr. Castro was incredible, did great things at Fresno State, was very engaged with the Valley because he was a Valley boy. And actually, we both graduated from Hanford High School the same year. No, it wasn't the same year. But, so I always told him, we went from bull pups to bulldogs. So again, I know Supervisor Crocker has been very engaged with Dr. Castro in bringing more Fresno State classes and possibly a campus here. I did the same while I was on the Visalia City Council. So big congratulations to Dr. Castro, and, and thank you for the, all that you have done for the Central Valley and higher education. That's all.
Thank you Supervisor. So I really just wanted to specifically highlight the Retirement Board meeting that took place last week that Supervisor Townsend attended. No formal decision was made, but a recommendation was made for the actuary to be finalizing a recommendation to be brought to the Retirement Board and adopted. The actual direction was controversial. It passed on a five-to-four motion. So the impact of this decision ultimately falls upon the county. And the range of options that were presented dealt with the changes being made to demographic assumptions, economic assumptions, and then in totality, that total number would be what the county would end up paying as a result. So based on changed demographic assumptions, the change amounted to 0.2%. Not that much, but it does amount to an increase for the county. The recommended option that was coming in was a 5.1% increase to the county. That may seem like a small percentage, but when you translate that to real dollars, it is very, very significant. They were actually going to, it was recommended to drop the assumed rate of return all the way from seven and a quarter down to 6.75. That recommendation would have resulted in probably, we figured that every five basis points is about a million, million bucks. What's that? It would have been about $12 million in total in impact to the county and the employees as well. So the ultimate recommendation that was settled upon, based upon the three-year experience study, was a lowering of the assumption rate to 7%, and that would be a phased-in decrease. But you know, really what we're looking at here is, is taking a guess or a stab at what inflation is going to be over the next period of time. And no one really knows. Historically, we've been fairly close. But it was recommended to go to 2.5%, but we went to 2.75. We really have had a very good relationship with the Retirement Board over the years. And ultimately, the Retirement Board is, and the Retirement Fund is only as healthy as the plan sponsor is. And so any financial impact undertaken by the plan sponsor that could potentially put us in a very negative situation and our ability to fund the contributions to the Retirement Board must be considered. So I just want to reiterate my appreciation for the members of the Retirement Board that did vote to pursue this option, and really not only minimize the financial impact to the county, but make a decision that was not taking an overly aggressive assumption at what the future's going to bring. So I just wanted to really go over that today. That's a very significant item for the county, and it was a significant decision last week. And the, the setup was a bit different than what we had originally intended. We wanted to have the meeting with all five board members in attendance, but due to social distancing and the lack of facilities, we were not able to do that. But ultimately, it went, it ended up going okay. That concludes Board of Supervisors Matters. We will now move on and take up item two, which is a request to receive an update from the Health and Human Services Agency on COVID-19 status and response efforts in Tulare County. Morning, Tim.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Board, CEO, and Counsel, Tim Lutz, Health and Human Services. I'm here today for my weekly report. So COVID activities for the last week, this morning, were at 16,204 individuals. That's up 422 since the last report, which is a 2.6% increase. Roughly the same types of numbers that we saw last week. Unfortunately, we did see six additional deaths, bringing our total deaths to 263 in the county. And our recoveries are at 15,392 people. Looking at our weekly trends, continued our, our downward trend with weekly cases ending down 7.9% from the prior week. Again, continuing to see that go in the direction we would like to see. Our daily case rate also continued a modest decline, going from 11.4 per 100,000 of the population to 8.8 per 100,000. A note here, and we, we were aligned more or less with what the state's methodology is. There's a variation between our reporting and the state's that puts us at, their estimate and us at 9.17. If we can't realign with what that is and identify what that discrepancy is, we can engage in a data adjudication with them where we can work through what the discrepancy is and, and argue our case for why we feel it should be lower. Our testing volume unfortunately still was a little bit below the state average, although closer than the prior week. So we were adjusted by a factor of 1.005 or half a percent. So the state is indicating our adjusted case rate is 9.21 per 100,000. One potential thing that we're looking at, we, we got to that 8.8 on the case rate locally by our metric. Have seen a small bump up in our non-lagged rate. That is to say, you know, it's kind of a preliminary rate. We're waiting for the rest of our information to come in. We know it's going to change. But that preliminary rate is starting to show a little bit of a, of a trend up that we're going to be watching carefully, obviously, over the next week. Our testing positivity continues to be our, of those two metrics, certainly the one that we're seeing the most progress on. For the weekend in 9/19, we're at 5.9%, which is definitely continually below that 8% threshold that we want, though we need to get the case rate below seven before we can start that 14-day clock for the red tier. And then our non-lagged positivity there, we're showing 4.6%. We expect that to go up, but we also saw a little bit after that 5.9% of a little peak up. So we're again continuing to watch that. Our effective moved up slightly. We were at 0.85, went to 0.88. The state across the board saw some increases in their R-effective. And the governor had made some reference to that in his press conference yesterday of a bit of a concern noting that the R-effective was starting to trick, you know, trend upwards slightly. So the few points that we want to continue to watch, that preliminary non-lagged testing positivity, we want to continue to watch that. And then of course, our case rate showing that preliminary estimated trend up. They, what the indicators might start to point to is a little bit of a plateau where we level off. And it would, our hope is not to level off above where we want to be to go to the, to the red tier. And certainly, if you look at where, what, where we're starting to see it, and what we would expect is probably some of our bump that we were thinking we'd see after Labor Day and end of summer types of activities. Our hospitalizations, I'm down 2% from last week, went from 35 to 34, so remaining relatively stable. Shifting gears now on our, the state activity, and this one's going to require a little bit of explanation and overview, so bear with me, and I apologize, as tends to be the case, with, in this case, the equity metric. So we are expecting that equity metric to be announced today. At least that's what we were told last night, that it looks like they're going to roll this out. There are a variety of changes that have been made from the last time I provided the board with an overview of the metric. What they're really looking at now is a county must ensure that the test positivity rates in the most disadvantaged neighborhoods, and those being defined as those in the lowest quartile of the Healthy Places Census Tracks, Healthy Places Index Census Tracks, must remain at or below the threshold for the tiers that you should be moving to. So how that realistically works? Movement from purple tier to red tier requires that the testing positivity for that lowest quartile, in addition to obviously overall county, that lowest quartile must meet the eight, the below 8% metric or threshold for testing positivity. And then it would be the same for movement from a red tier to an orange tier. It must be then within 5% of the threshold for moving to the orange tier. And then for orange to yellow tier, it must be within 10%. So an example of, of that again would be we're at, you know, 5.9% on our K, on our testing positivity. We're below seven on our case rate. But if that lowest quartile is not below the 8% testing positivity threshold, we would not be able to move to a red tier until we got it to within. within that 8% range. At this point, we've been asking for confirmation or some clear data. We haven't seen the exact numbers. In talking to the CHIAC, which is the health, the Health Officers and Public Health Association for the state, the indication is we, Tulare, will be one of a small handful of counties that probably are going to be impacted by this metric, and realistically, it will delay our advancement to a red tier, assuming our trends continue and we get to the case rate that we want to see. The, I guess, the flip side, or what the state sees as their character benefit to that, is they're also allowing an accelerated progression through the tiers. If you, if our, that quartile for the Healthy Places Index is two tiers below, the metric is two tiers below where we're currently at, so an example would be if our testing positivity for the county and our lowest quartile is below that 5% threshold for two consecutive weeks, regardless of what our case rate is. So, our case rate could be above the 7, we would be able to advance down to the red tier. So, it's kind of, allows a potential alternative path if our case rate continues to be stubborn and stay above that 7, but our testing positivity for not only the county overall, but that lowest quarter, quartile for the Healthy Places Index, we would be able to move to red. Understandably, this has generated a lot of frustration by those impacted counties, difficult to try and articulate, and also more challenging for us to track, and really adding this kind of submetric that stops your progression if we're not meeting it. So, that will understandably also be one of our big drivers of making sure that we're doing everything we can to identify strategies to meet, to meet that testing positivity for that lowest quartile in the Healthy Places Index.
So, Tim, excuse me, does that mean increased testing in that class right there?
It does mean increased testing, the key being what we don't know, again, is increased testing, but if it's a lot of positives, that still is going to impact us. So, it really means if you have a high prevalence of COVID within that population, we have to do a lot of testing in order to bring that testing positivity percentage to below the 8% threshold that we need to meet. So, it's, yes, testing's part of it, but we also need to look at who's, you know, basically, if we're getting a lot of positives, it's going to still hinder our ability.
What it really means is we're screwed.
I'm sorry?
What it really means is we're screwed, but anyway.
For lack of a better term.
Ah, thank you.
Which, which brings me to, and I will say, and my concern with that is, you know, exactly as you state, Supervisor Shuckley, and going on to operations activities on our mobile testing. Our Verily site opened Friday in Woodlake. Really unfortunately, we saw one patient for testing and one that had to be turned away due to mobility and language barriers. Staff attended a training on Monday, and we're going to be supporting that Verily site to address language barriers so that we don't repeat that. However, still, that would have been two people through that site. We also have on our other collection sites, Monday in Pixley, Wednesday Strathmore, Thursday Lindsay, Friday Exeter, and we are seeing some decent collection numbers from those sites, but again, it's been slow-going. More frustrating is those sites are supposed to end the end of this week, when we just got the resource from the state. So, we've sent a request up to the federal team trying to keep those mobile testing resources because it took work to get it there, and then to lose it so quickly from the state just sets us back and requires that we change our outreach strategy. Please?
Yes, so, as mentioned in terms of like with the Ivanhoe case, and I just got feedback now, which I want to thank our team, so there were 380 boxes of food given out, 150 backpacks, 150 boxes of supplies, 76 additional resources, bags after supply boxes were gone, many diapers, and a pallet of water. However, nine test collections were done by Family Healthcare Network. So, again, I appreciate all of the entities coming together to supply all of these resources, but I think what happens at the end of the day with these opportunities is that people are going for those resources and not necessarily for the testing. And so, hence why I would say that moving forward, that the focus begins on just testing, and so that way, we can alleviate our staff to focus on other needed areas through COVID-19. So, just as a thing to note, again, it's a work in progress, and we learn as we go, but I would just encourage staff to focus on the testing, and then, obviously, the resources and supplies can come at another time.
I think, and I appreciate those comments, Supervisor, because I think we all unfortunately realize that after we rolled them out, is that we really want to provide a broad group of resources, but when testing is really the metric right now, we do want to focus pretty extensively there. We're looking at expanding our partnerships with our promotoras. We're also looking at other local health clinics, resources, I think, engaging some of our partners like the FQHCs, but also the, I drew a blank on what, the family resource centers within our different communities. Those trusted resources that are already working with a lot of the community, how do we start to build in that testing capacity? We were also looking, and Karen and I were talking before the meeting about trying to find some public-private partnership where if we could get some gift cards to even offer some type of a gift card for, you know, going through and doing the testing, ways to provide some incentive and encouragement of please get tested.
And I also think it's important that we get the message out too, Tim. You know, it's not just incentivizing people to go get tested. People need to know, even if you've been tested already, you can go get tested again, and two, you don't have to be symptomatic to go and get tested, and I don't think that message is getting out there enough. I still think people are hesitant because they say, "Well, I've already been tested once, I don't have it." Well, that doesn't mean you're clear of it forever, and secondly, people think that they have to have symptoms in order to go get tested, and so people are seeing things kind of slowly ramp down in terms of testing sites, locations, and that publicity. It's not surprising that the numbers are going down as well.
But I would also say that people are tired, and that people are just exhausted, and so I know that this is something that we still need to press forward with. And I would say going back to the event, which, again, they poured their heart out. I met with people at each of the different stations, and you see the love, you see the compassion being shared once residents are coming through the line, which, again, kudos to everyone involved. But I also think that the way the COVID testing station was stationed is that it's just one of several others, and it wasn't kind of the focus per se, but it was just as you as you move along the line, this is one of the options among others as you carry on through the pathway. So, I think the focus should be on the testing initially, and then go about getting your resources after you've had that contact with the COVID testing site.
If there are no other questions, the last section, I was going to provide an update on school waivers that we're at as of this morning, and it got updated a little bit from my report that I sent out, and stuff trickles in later in the evening or gets updated in the morning. We're at 10 approved waivers and then nine schools with submitted waivers, pending revisions. Updates from last week on, in terms of the approved schools, Sausalito Elementary in Taravella and Hope Elementary in Porterville both were approved and are able to operate with the waiver, within the waiver. And then, the following school submitted waivers last week, Oak Valley Union in Tulare, Springville Union in Springville, Liberty School in Tulare, Sunnyside Union in Strathmore, and Sequay Union in Lemon Cove. And so, those nine are under review with us, some going back to revisions. Again, a couple came in last night, so still pretty fresh on our team being able to review them and submit back for any needed corrections. And unless there are additional questions, that concludes my report.
Supervisor Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Tim, for that report and for all of your hard work. I don't know how you do it. There's no other probably game, athletic event, financial goal, anything in life that we do where we change the target every week or so and still try to hit it. So, you're trying to hit a moving target, and I just applaud you for all of your brave efforts in trying to keep up with the state. So, our actual case rate, 8.8 per 100,000. The state's number, which we don't know what the heck it's based on, is 9.17 on our actual 8.8 number, and then the state artificially inflates our 8.8 number to 9.21 based on a moving weekly testing number target that they keep telling us how to get to. So, just a real interesting way that the state has of moving us around and trying to get us to something. We have a lower R-effective rate than the state by almost 10%. That used to be a really, really important number until it wasn't. So, all of our hospital metrics are met now, below what the state is looking for or above, however you want to look at that, all of them. And so, today, we're going to be announcing a new equity measure at seven months into this shutdown. We're going to have another equity measure, so even if we do everything, and, you know, all of the people in the county are working so hard, and businesses are making videos, mask up Tulare County, and spending lots of time and taxpayer money to get all this done, and we're below our 8% positive, and so we're going to find out today that that doesn't matter anymore unless our lowest quartile of the healthy, what's it called, Healthy Places Index is also below 8%. So, I don't know how you do it, how you continue to stay positive and not get very cynical at this point in time, but I appreciate all the work that you do, and I think that we really need to, as you mentioned in your report, it says this will delay our advancement to the red tier. So, no matter what we're all doing Tulare County, the state is going to delay our advancement into the next tier, no matter what we're doing. So, great job Tulare County, though, and not to take it away from the people that are trying so hard. Great job HHSA, trying so hard. State, need to get your act together in telling us what we need to do and then sticking to a goal. And sorry, Tim, that that wasn't a question, it was just a statement to relay a little frustration.
And I appreciate the comment on cynicism because there are days. Last night, hearing the state's call, I will admit, my frame of mind was less than optimistic and more than a little frustrated.
Say it isn't so. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
All right, Supervisor Crocker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Tim, for giving us another update. I'm pleased that other schools are going through the waiver process, and I'm happy to see some District 1 schools that I know I've been speaking with directly that are finally moving forward with that. I know that's not an easy process, but I think it's, ultimately, it's going to be very beneficial for their young people. So, keep that up. I also appreciate the information you provided about the vaccine, even though we may not have mentioned it here, I think that's really important for us. There's a lot of noise going on as far as what's really going on, and it's hard to know from my standpoint, and so, you know, recognizing that we might have a first round by November 1st, that's very positive. That's something that's very encouraging, and so I just, you know, I recognize that the storage might be, or is a concern, and making sure that we have refrigeration units that can handle those type of deep freezes, and so being able to transport them, I think that's really, should be a strong focus, is making sure that we're ready when that's available so we can help with the distribution, we can help with providing that out. Because again, I think, you know, before that happens, we're, I mean, we've got, we're playing, the state of California is playing pinball with us, and they're bouncing around from this goal to that goal, and I don't think it's, we're going to be struggling until we, until we have really something finite like a vaccine, and even that's not finite. I mean, it's, it's not a, it's, you know, recognizing that vaccines still have, they're not, they're not a cure, but that gets us moving towards some type of getting beyond all of the shutdowns and everything else. So, I just encourage you with that. I'm very supportive. On the, on the whole equity measure, I've got a few asks, and I was kind of looking over the Healthy Places Index while you were going through the information. I think what would be helpful from my standpoint is, and I know they have a map listed on their website, but seeing a map, having some type of list with our census tracks, because just look, glancing at it, you know, we're, I don't know, 2/3 of our, of our flatland portion of the county is, is going to be in that quarter, that lowest decile or quartile. And so, we're, you know, what does that look like as far as from a population standpoint? What is that, you know, as far as, you know, from a census tract by census tract versus overall? And then, again, what are we doing to then, if we're moving the, if we have influence in moving the Optum site from the International Agro Center to the fairgrounds, because we think that that's going to boost, to boost our, the likelihood of people utilizing that site, you know, what does that mean to then, you know, move that or move one of the other sites to an area that's in that, in that darker blue category, in that lowest quartile? Because that should be the emphasis as far as I'm concerned. If we're, if that's going to be the thing that holds us back, then why are we spending resources on something that's really not going to move the needle? You know, granted, the needle's here today and it's somewhere else tomorrow, but in the meantime, there's still, it still doesn't make any sense as far as why we're doing that, and so if we need to move the sites, let's move the sites again. Let's move them to, let's put them in Lindsay, let's put it in Tipton or Early Mart, let's move another one to Cutler, you know, something along those lines. I mean, wherever it's blue, where that deep blue is, if we need to jump through that hoop, let's, you know, it doesn't make any sense to have it in a, in a green portion of the county, as far as I'm concerned, and that's, I recognize that that's where the populations are, but that's not what the state's got their, you know, got their hands around our neck, and that they don't care whether or not there's population. It doesn't seem like they really care whether or not there's the overall total number of, I mean, we don't, that's not a, that's no longer a metric that we're looking, that we have to have so many, so many tests. I mean, I haven't heard that in months as far as the percentage of testing for overall.
The testing volume, where it gets us, is really on the adjustment to the case rate. So, if our volume is below state average, then it does the adjustment that Supervisor Townsend mentioned on the case rate, so that's really where testing volume itself comes into play anymore.
Okay, so, yeah, it just goes to the point where you can't win, because they're not going to provide additional testing supplies or resources. The testing, the mobile testing that was, seemed like it was fairly successful in Strathmore and Lindsay and Exeter is done tomorrow as far as their funding.
Yeah.
So, yeah. So, just the map, additional information, that would, that's really my ask as far as the Healthy Places Index. Places Index. You know, maybe some of the main points as far as how they get their criteria, you know, what's the thought process on why these are less healthy and not? I noticed it's a Southern California firm that's coming up with data for us. That's all. That's it.
Okay. All right. So a few things that I wanted to go over, Tim. I know that last week you had mentioned that you would be following up with some child abuse numbers in a little bit more detail. I know that that's something that is really a concern, you know, that being that one of the primary reporting agencies is a school district and there are so many children not in school. What are we seeing still? I think that's an important number to be mentioning because, you know, it's one of those things that's being overlooked by the state as a consequence to not having children in the school, and it's a number that's being underreported, and are we really benefiting for and advocating for our children? So I definitely want to see that. I think that we're overly concerned about COVID amongst our youth population under the age of 18, but an even more serious threat to their well-being is child abuse, and no one seems to care about that. So, you know, I think that's something that we really need to keep our focus on and doing what we can to be an advocate there as well. Schools, I'm really glad to see an increase in the number of schools that are applying through the waiver process. I think that's very important. There are school districts that can accommodate in-person learning through the waiver planning, and it's nice to see those numbers continue to increase. That is absolutely a way to benefit our children, and we've seen several schools return their youth to school safely, and it's nice to see more doing that. So again, appreciate the schools team and the work that they're doing there, too. Testing publicity, I think we do need to continue to publicize the testing, and I mentioned earlier, you know, really getting that message out there, encouraging people to go get tested. I know you commented on the volume of tests and how important that is so that we don't have that negative factor on our case numbers. And I think that your shift to the Tulare Fairgrounds is actually going to be a good one. I actually think that'll be one of the first locations that's going to be located in close proximity to a transit center. And so that allows for people from throughout an area to get easy access to testing, whether they're in an unincorporated community or an incorporated city. Real quick, couple of questions for you. Maybe just comment or if you can give some general numbers on the counties in the state of California that have moved to the red tier and then what has happened in the valley? Because I feel like this equity metric is specifically targeting certain counties and penalizing them. And, you know, it's not like, you know, there's a quarter of the counties in the state or half the counties in the state that are going to be severely penalized or held back by this. It's three, four, maybe five counties. And how did we get that target on our back? So I'm just kind of curious if you want to comment on that. And then the last thing that you can maybe weave into your comments, how many times in this seven-month response to the pandemic has the state changed the rules?
I think I've lost count of that one.
So I just think it's a, I think it's an important thing because, you know, you've heard the comments made by numerous supervisors thanking your staff and thanking you for the work that's being done to move Tulare County forward, only to have the rules change again and have us put right back to the starting line, no closer to the finish line. And it just, you know, how do you continue to strive towards something when the end goal keeps changing? So you can respond to those comments.
No, and I agree on going, taking the last question first or the comment. It is exceptionally frustrating where we, for me, the testing really was one of the most frustrating points where I felt we were on a really good progression on our testing volume. We were, I feel, in a good spot. Then they changed the guidelines, asked that we go back to testing only symptomatic, and we followed the rules. We followed that guidance, and I feel that we got punished for doing that.
And how many counties that are now in the red tier did not follow the guidance and continued to test asymptomatic individuals, and they're now in the red tier?
It would be speculation because we don't know that definitively, but I, based on their volume and their positivity percentage, they had to have been testing asymptomatic.
So I mean, this valley is going to be pretty well painted red, and there's going to be a purple section right in the middle, and that's us.
Well, and then going to your other question that you had, so our counties of where we are, per the list that's supposed to be coming out today for where the tier assignments are, there are 18 counties that are in purple and 22 now are in red. When you look at what's in purple, the, we have Colusa, Glen, Imperial, Kern, Kings, Los Angeles, Madera, Mendocino, Merced, Monterey, San Benito, San Bernardino, Sonoma, Stanislaw, Sutter, Tulare, Ventura, and Yuba, a lot of valley counties still in that purple. The only valley counties that at this point would be moving to a red tier is Fresno County and then San Joaquin County.
Okay, so it's not as bad then in the valley as what, in terms of everyone moving into the red, and then so we're pretty much, really Fresno's an outlier, so to speak.
Well, and it would be, although we're still just trying to kind of get a grasp around what the data says, I do think it's an interesting note that some of the counties that had direct cares allocations in addition to state cares allocations, they really expanded testing the most through some of those direct cares allocations. You had Fresno basically offering a free testing, you know, for anybody type of a program that was paid for through CARE. So I think it gave them, going back to your symptomatic versus asymptomatic, if you're doing free testing for all, it's for all. So asymptomatic, symptomatic.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, and I mean, it's just, it's just a really frustrating thing to see this community continue to play by the rules and to, you know, do what they can to help slow the spread and only to have the one entity that can continue to hold you back and change the rules and force you to stay in a lockdown state, just continuing to do that no matter what progress is being made. So, and you know, even one other point that I wanted to ask, too, I was reminded, have you seen the UST report, the Unified Support Team report from the state?
I have not seen a final report.
That was promised to us as a follow-up. And when did they come again? Was that in August?
That was August.
And we're October, and this was supposed to be an ongoing partnership and commitment to help advance all of these Unified Support Team counties to advance and to make progress. And yet, we've upheld our side of the bargain and there's no reciprocation. So that's a little frustrating for me, too, being someone that participated in good faith in that program and in that effort. So really, what is it, you know, I don't know, I just, it's very, very frustrating for me. But, and on a positive note, thank you for your work and your staff for their continued dedication to help Tulare County communities to advance and to move Tulare County forward. That's appreciated from this perspective, and no matter what the state does, you're appreciated here locally.
Yeah.
Any additional questions or comments? All right, that concludes that item. Thank you very much, Tim, appreciate it. Next is item three. It's a request to receive an update from the Workforce Investment Board regarding the COVID-19 Business Assistance Program. The one and only Adam Peck.
Thank you. And I promise, well, I don't promise, I'm hoping this is the last update I'll need to give you all on this project, but I wanted to kind of wrap up because I felt like every time I came, even the last one, we had some moving target of how we were ending up. And so wanted to make sure we, I was able to present and give you some final numbers of where we ended up with the project. So we ended up funding 1,075 small businesses and independent contractors with the funding that we were provided. That is, those, I would say 90, over 90% of those checks have already gone out. There are a few last-minute people that signed agreements late and are issues with them that are going out by the end of this week. So actual checks cut and gone out, we will have the full 1,075 by the time we hit the end of this week, and we're just like five away from that as it stands now. So just wanted to kind of go over it in a few different ways so we can see, starting off with, you know, things some businesses had said, been in business 23 years and never had to ask for help, but we wanted to be able to stay in business. Thank you so much for calling to help us out. We are more than grateful. You know, you all experienced this, people have issues with connecting with government. They're freaked out about it, they're concerned, is about what they say. And so we were fortunate that some of the folks we brought in to communicate were small business owners themselves who were impacted. And the way that people let their guard down when they know they were talking to another person, which they always are, but they don't, they lose sight of that because they feel like they're talking to a system or this kind of, just something that isn't personable. But when we can have someone say, hey, you know, let's figure this out together, we're in this together, I'm like you, I'm one of you, I share with these same things, it really allowed people to communicate in a way that allowed us to help them. So the, of who we reached out to, broken down by the highest areas, you can see as we've talked before, Visalia was the most represented and laid out as such. But as I mentioned, that I would try to give some indication of penetration of the number of businesses that exist throughout in these areas, to what level did we reach, get to those businesses? And it's an imperfect measure because there are different business listings, but I use the best business listing database I have and looked at the same size of businesses. And then, so even though Visalia is by far the top in terms of total number of businesses that were assisted, if we instead look at a penetration rate, you end up with, Visalia still decent, but you end up with smaller cities, you can see relatively at this, at higher or similar levels. So it gives you, you know, I'm just, the one I'm most disappointed with obviously is Porterville at the bottom there. We just weren't able to crack into that in the same manner we were with others, even though we have great partnerships with the city and the chamber in that community. But they were also putting at the exact same time a CDBG funding grant together that supported a lot of businesses in that community at the same time. So now, when we look at the industry reach, what kind of industries were these businesses? I grouped them in these large chunks, but the most common was something that is, in the way that businesses are categorized, they're categorized as other services. So whenever you look at national data or even state data, you'll see this catch-all other that catches a lot when it comes to this. It catches a lot of the salons, the auto repair, a pretty broad category of kind of the personal services areas as well. So that was our actually largest number, and I'll give, I'm going to go each, a few of these, and I'm going to give a total. And then also professional and business services, this is another catch-all that hits a lot of other, like plumbers, photographers, lawn care. That's, you can see how different those are, but you can also see how those hang together. They're common, and again, should give a good sense. I think those are the type of businesses we had hoped to be able to reach out to. So we had 155 of those. And then 128 in the leisure and hospitality, that's restaurants, there are some, you know, museums, there are some other tourist-based kind of businesses that was next on our list. And then educational and health services, a lot of daycares and doctors, small doctors' offices were in that category. And then retail, self-explanatory. And then even some, and we'll see, actually, we ended up one out of order here that I'll show next, but ag-related businesses of some sort that are small businesses were in that top-tier category. For overview of all those, these are, you know, numbers you're seeing again, you can, we actually failed to put one in for financial activities there. That's all kinds of small real estate offices and accounting offices, a range of financial activities. And then you can see some we didn't have, you know, transportation, warehousing, construction, wholesale, and some manufacturing. So really, I think largely the types of businesses that I think we think of, these really small businesses that don't know how to navigate these other programs, that's largely who ended up getting support through this investment that you made. So how about in terms of when the decade, the time that the business opened? We were dealing, you know, with, you can see across there that a lot of them, over half, were from 2010 to current, including a chunk that were actually started up prior, this year prior to the pandemic hitting. But you can see ranges, as I mentioned before, they're all the way back to 1903, we had some businesses. But that's the range of the age of the businesses that we served. And then by district, these are largely unchanged from the last time, least proportionally. We had District One with 242, District Two with 161, District Three with the 421, District Four with 149, and District Five with 102. So that's how it ended up breaking down by district in the final numbers. And then, and then by the type of business, you can see mostly sole proprietorship, a few of the independent contractors, and a real smattering of a few of the others, including nonprofits and some religious organizations. And, you know, just one more quote, "This opportunity is a Godsend, I can't thank you enough. I will utilize this in the most intelligent way and I can and develop my business through this crisis." So businesses really were appreciative, really were appreciative of it, of being able to communicate with a person and to get answers to their questions about how it could be spent, to get kind of worked through if their first application wasn't, didn't have everything as it should, to figure out a way to correct that. A lot of conversations with a lot of folks in this community. We will continue beyond making sure that we help these businesses over this next month to make sure they spend the money in the way, and they have questions answered as they have, so that they can effectively get this money spent correctly. We will do a follow-up to make sure that, a spot check of a percent of them to ensure that they spent the money in the manner that they said they were going to. But we're also going to continue to provide them, you know, business resources and information. Look at this as a cohort of very small businesses that we want to, on an ongoing basis, make sure they have good information about local resources to support their businesses and other types of supports that are available to them, unless they opt out because we're driving them crazy with stuff. We'll continue to send that information to them and figure out ways to engage with them because, like I say, they're often folks who, they can't deal with the noise around of all the folks who supposedly want to help them. And so being able to kind of focus on what might be most relevant to them. So that concludes the overview. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks for the presentation, Adam. I thought that was a really good, detailed breakdown of how this program actually impacted and helped in the community. and helped in the community. Couple things, I can definitely see some of the tweaks that were made to the program when you first came to the board with the concept initially. I can see some of those tweaks directly impacting the numbers that we have, you know, the churches, the nonprofits, the, you know, we just, independent contractors. We added a few different areas to target, and I think that really helped to boost the numbers. But all in all, in designing the program, you had originally thought we could help around 1,000 businesses. That's exactly what this program ended up doing. So, you know, I really do appreciate the contact that was made with these businesses. And I think it's also an opportunity for you and your department to continue to facilitate and interact with these businesses, most of which you probably have had no interaction with previously. So, you know, whether it's job training or just availability of jobs, different services within the workforce industry that you're dealing with, we might be able to provide a different level of assistance and aid to these businesses. So, great job, great program. Really do think this has had a very positive impact in Tulare County. Supervisor Crocker?
Thank you. And I'm glad we did increase some of the options as far as what types of businesses because we saw there was a need and the dollar amount because there was, it would have been terrible, I think, from my standpoint, if we would have had to turn away. And I know there was a lottery and that, there would have been several that would have missed out. So I'm really glad that we did that and we got to everyone that, you know, was, as best as we could, we got out to everyone that needed it. Just a quick question on the business breakdowns. Do you guys utilize NAICS or what was, how did you?
Yeah, that's, those are in NAICS groupings and then they're grouped a little bit more by the way that sometimes the feds and state does as they distribute it into, like professional and business services is two groupings of two-digit NAICS. And so it is, we did use NAICS as the way to group those businesses.
That's what I was looking for.
But we just did it at the two-digit level essentially, instead of going down to the, you know, more granular level on that.
That's all I had. Thank you.
All right. Supervisor Shucklian?
No questions, just comments. Once again, thank you. You know, I've gotten a few phone calls this week thanking me. I didn't sign the check, but, you know, people have been receiving their checks and said this really helps. I can pay some bills now. I can start looking to the future and getting some PPEs and all of that. So the ease of application, the timing, I think everything went very well. I'm glad that we didn't have to do a lottery. I wish more people would have applied, but I'm glad that we didn't, you know, have to do a lottery and some people who really needed it missed out. So again, thank you and thank all your staff for the hard work.
Thank you.
Supervisor Townsend?
Yeah, Adam, sort of the same thing, not really a question, just thanks because when we initially were rolling this out, sort of the same thing that you mentioned, people said, oh, well, I'll leave it for somebody that really needs it more than I do, or man, I'm really not sure if I want to go through all the government funds with the strings attached. So I had a lot of those conversations, but I know that in your follow-up, you've had, you know, exponentially more of those conversations with each of these businesses. And so afterwards, as people began to be approved and began to receive the grant funding, I was also getting a lot of these thanks and similar to the quotes that you've shown us this morning. So I think you just handled it very well and doing that peer-to-peer, I think, was a wonderful idea. So thanks so much for handling this for us. Appreciate it.
All right. Supervisor Valero?
Yes. So again, comment, really to share and show your flexibility. I know that we as a board gave some direction, but your office was able to be flexible and amenable and to come back and really share with us in true authentic form. I also want to give a shout out to Sylvia Marie, who was our contact person for District Four. Very, very helpful, very informative, as well as the opportunity to engage in that webinar that we hosted for that. And then also just, again, a showing of gratitude by the nonprofits and organizations that we're able to receive. So again, kudos on a job well done.
Can we get a copy of this PowerPoint so we have the numbers and whatnot?
Yeah, I'll make sure Marta has the updated copy as well because I've made a few changes at the last minute. And I want to thank the board for making this investment and looking to the web to help out with it. It's been a great partnership with the CAO office, with Otter's office. I can't tell you how amazing and of having to do a lot of things on the fly, how flexible the Otter's office was and figuring out how to make that work and bringing in IT to help with that, the chambers and the cities coming together to figure it out. And then, of course, you know, my staff, you mentioned Sylvia Marie, Christina Hopper that we brought on for it, Jane O'Brien, and then a number, you know, Jenny Bautista and Nicola Whistler from my staff, and a number of other folks. A lot of folks really believed in what we were trying to achieve here. And Chairman, your point of that we gain insight and relationships that we didn't already have, you're exactly right. We often deal with some of the bigger industries, healthcare, some of the big employers, some of the big employers in manufacturing, but we, and then we work with a lot of workers, people out of work or people looking for jobs, but that kind of small entrepreneur, we haven't really reached out to in that way. And this, I think, gave us better relationships and better understanding of what the needs are of these types of folks and how we can work with partners to meet those needs. So it's, we've definitely benefited from it in that way.
That's great. Well, thank you very much, Adam. Job well done.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on our agenda is a request to present a proclamation recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month in Tulare County. I will now call forward, do you want to go down there and call forward the Tulare Kings Hispanic Chamber? Thank you. Turn it over to Supervisor Valero.
Gil Jaramillo, Executive Director, in addition to Carlos Mendoza, President of the Tulare Kings Hispanic Chamber. All right. Well, September 15 to October 15 is Hispanic Heritage Month. This month, Hispanic Americans embody American values, including commitment to faith, family, and country. The Hispanic American community continues to provide a fixed mark on our government, on our culture, and the economy. That being said, there is an organization in Tulare County that continues to leave its mark wherever it goes and in whatever it does. The Tulare Kings Hispanic Chamber of Commerce works to develop business training and expertise along with growth and prosperity within the Hispanic community for the purpose of mutual economic benefit. TKHCC continues to strive even during times of challenge and change. And so with that, I am going to present this proclamation from, on behalf of the County of Tulare Board of Supervisors, and it reads, "Recognizing the month of September 15 to October 15 as Hispanic Heritage Month in Tulare County. Whereas to honor the achievements of Hispanic Americans, Hispanic Heritage Week was signed into law by President London B. Johnson in 1968. This commemorative week was expanded by legislation signed into law in 1988 by President Ronald Reagan, making it Hispanic Heritage Month. And whereas September 15 was selected as the starting point of the celebration because of it being the anniversary of independence for five Latin American countries, them being Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, and Belize, who also celebrate their independence in the month of September. And whereas the United States of America draws its strength from the contributions of all its people, Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the vibrant traditions of faith, family, hard work, and patriotism that Hispanic Americans bring to our community. And whereas during this month, we honor the 1.2 million Hispanic Americans who have answered the call to serve in our armed forces, demonstrating remarkable loyalty, bravery, and dedication to duty. And whereas we recognize the Tulare Kings Hispanic Chamber of Commerce for their work to promote the growth of Hispanic businesses in Tulare County and their many contributions to the Hispanic community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the month of September 15 through October 15, 2020, as Hispanic Heritage Month in Tulare County, and calls upon all citizens to celebrate and honor the many contributions to our community made by Hispanic Americans. Signed on September 29, 2020, Supervisor Crocker, Chairman Pete Vanderpoel, Vice Chairman Amy Shucklian, Supervisor Valero, and Supervisor Dennis Townsend."
All right. So if you would like to make any formal announcements?
Wow. Thank you guys so much. Thank you Supervisor Valero. Thank you Supervisor Townsend, Crocker, Shucklian, and Vanderpoel. This means a lot to us that our works are not going unnoticed, that you guys do notice what we're doing for the community, and we're going to continue to do our works for the community. We have a lot of exciting things. Just hearing the report we heard earlier about aiming to go in the red, we look forward to helping the county to go in the red as well. We have a lot of outreach we're going to be doing in the rural areas, I mean, as south as Early Mart, all the way to Cutler, Rosy, I mean, around the county. So with your guys' help and collaboration, we really appreciate it because we know we can help each other. And like I always advocate and always say, we need to come together, work together, and most importantly, be safe together. Thank you. And I'd like to turn over to our Executive Director, Gil Jaramillo, to say a couple words, and also our Vice President, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll be very brief. Prior to this, of course, we had the SBA programs with the EIDL, the PPP, and our center here in Visalia assisted in helping our local businesses obtain over $6 million in assistance from the SBA programs. And now we're going forward, we're trying to participate in the COVID prevention precaution. We're doing a lot of events in specifically the rural areas. We were in Ivanhoe. We're working with Family Healthcare Network in the Cuadrinas, going to the fields and actually feeding the field workers lunch. And in every instance, we provide COVID precaution information. And so we're throwing as much mud on the wall as we can to see what's going to stick. So we are doing a lot of efforts and hoping maybe somebody somewhere will be tested and found that that helped them. So we're helping not only the business community, but the community at large. Thank all of you, in particular, for working very closely, hand in hand, with Supervisor Crocker, Supervisor Valero. And we talk all the time about helping the rural areas. So thank you very much.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Oga Duran, and I'm the Vice President for the Tulare Kings Hispanic Chamber. I just want to say thank you so much for this recognition. We have an amazing staff, which is Gil Jaramillo, our CEO, and our Office Manager, Griselda Ibarra, that, you know, through this whole COVID, it's been a challenge, but we've stepped it up and they've done an amazing job. The Tulare Kings Hispanic Chamber has been here for 26 years and, you know, there was times where we thought, okay, we're not going to make it, but we're here. And thank you so much for the recognition, for the hard work that the whole staff does.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is Item 5, Public Comments. The first public comment we're going to take up today is from our fire chief, Chief Charlie Norman, to give an update about the fire, the complex fire.
Thanks, bud. Good morning, all.
Morning.
How do I make it bigger, Matt? Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Brett, County Council. Just, okay, there's the toolbar I was looking for. Good morning. Just kind of wanted to provide an update in three minutes or less of everything that's been going on with the SQF incident. To date, as of this morning, we're at 150,800 acres, 58% containment, making it the biggest fire in Tulare County history. We have 1,987 firefighters assigned to this incident, cost of $68,745,000. 232 structures destroyed, 173 single-family residential, 59 minor structures, and 12 damaged. In comparison, the McNally Fire was 150,696, 45.7 million, and 17 structures destroyed. On a positive note, there are only 93 days left in 2020. Moving forward and with our resource allocation today, I think one of the big things we need to look at is we are losing some resources today. We did have this og fire break out and Shasta County's, where's the glass fire in Napa County? And the creek fire is pretty well stabilizing itself with about 44% containment. Just kind of, as you can see, we have a lot of open line on the northern side and the northern central part of the fire. Most of that is hitting that lionfire burn scar, and we're in very, very good shape there because of the past burn history. I'll try and get a close in, close up on some of this area. Moving to the southern portion of the fire, where Pondrosa is right in this area, crews have been doing a tremendous job tying that into the 190. And you can see there is fire completely around this community. We still, we have a lot of black line here, thus bringing up to our 58% containment, but we do have quite a bit of open line in the northern portion of the community. So as we look at repopulation, that's our big concern. We need to make sure we close off that line so we can get people back in there safely. As we look up towards this and trying to get this in a somewhat readable fashion here, as we go into the community of Camp Nelson, notice how Camp Nelson here, we do have black line around it, great group. The only concern we have here is some potential rollout. As we went up there the other day and we saw the painted roadways on the Highway 190, just potential rollout and that, some of that downhill rollout when we had that fast-moving fire that hit Cedar Slope, Redwood Drive, Alpine, and Sequoia Crest. So that's kind of, everything else seems to be tying. We don't have any issues in the southeast corner as it approaches Kennedy Meadows. We just need to tie in that little bit of line right there at the top. Next steps, and this is very big, and I can't imagine what some of these residents are going through, having lost structures. And again, high priority, we had no life safety issues. People heeded the mandatory evacuation orders, were able to get people out of there. County RMA Building Department, we're looking at some processes along with HHSA and the Sheriff's Department, and having a recovery task force working group, which we started yesterday. Removing some of the debris, the tree hazards, roadway, and the environmental hazards so we can get people in there. As we go through the building permit process, trying to not deviate, we have state and uniform, we have Uniform Building Code, Fire Code, California Fire Code, but streamlining this process so we can get people back up there to build and doing a rapid streamlining site plan review. Repopulation, and that's where I'm getting the majority of our phone calls, as I'm sure you are too. We have two groups that are in there. We needed to get Camp Nelson and Ponderosa and that citizenry back there because we do have some permanent residents, a lot of permanent residents up there. And then we have a group that needs to get back to evaluate their damages, Sequoia Crest, the Cedar Slope, and Doyle Springs and Alpine. So we have two different groups that are trying to do that. With the repopulation meetings, we're looking at the timeline of a few days, whether we do, and there's kind of a mixed bag on this, whether we escort some people out there to look at their damage assessment, to make sure. But we need to get people up there. This is, again, as we talked about Supervisor Towns, this is no different than a death notification to family. We need to be sensitive to these needs because we want to make sure we get people up there. And that's what people are restless about. We're getting very, very close on containment. Once we hit about 70, 72%, things will be a lot better. I'll feel a lot better. So, but crews are doing well. We need to make conscious effort to get everybody back in there. But this has been the last six weeks of our lives, and the impacts of this to the county are very, very huge. I'm very sensitive to that. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. Couple of weeks, we'll get things ramped down. I'll provide a comprehensive week-by-week report of how everything played out, strategy and tactics, as well as damage assessment. So I would answer any questions briefly that you may have.
Supervisor Crocker?
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate just continuing to provide us with updates and being available for us and all your staff that's doing tremendous work. I just note, and I know you know this, but just for the sake of noting it, that as we get further along in the season, Silver City, Mineral King, the need to be able to, you know, go in and winterize cabins. And so as far as escorts are concerned, that may be another one, even though I know that they're still under a mandatory evacuation, being able to look at that in the near future as far as preparing those places so that they can withstand the winter conditions outside of fire conditions. And then just for residents, more as a note, as I stated, but there's quite a bit of still debris up there. And I think that's probably going to be the biggest hurdle to getting people repopulated is that it's not so much that there's necessarily a fire damage, but when you have boulders that are on the road and you have trees that are still falling and collapsing out on roadways and blocking things. And, I mean, when we were up there, Caltrans had street sweepers out, and there were chainsaws cutting trees and trying to remove hazards. And those are real things, not to mention there's downed power lines, you know, all over. And the utilities were putting estimators out there to look at damages and looking at things, as well as the local water utilities and infrastructure, to see whether or not they could provide water services and if hydrants were damaged. So, I mean, there's still a lot of work that needs to be done, even though there may not be any major active fire in those communities. And so I just, for community's sake, we need to continue to be patient and work through, as we work through this recovery process. It's not going to happen overnight. There's a lot of, there's a lot of things that are going to happen to get us back to being able to repopulate those areas.
Thank you, Supervisor.
All right, Supervisor Townsend?
Yeah, thanks again, Chief, for all of your hard work on this and for all of your crews. And I just to note, especially when you were showing the map and you were showing Ponderosa being completely encircled with the fire, and yet we haven't lost any structures there. And it really speaks volumes about the hard work of everybody that's out there cutting those lines in and the structure protection. As I understand, going between cabins and homes with spot fires and putting those out, individuals going and putting them out before, and even doing some preemptive clearing and backburning between those to keep anything from happening. So it's really appreciated by the community, and everyone that hears about it is very appreciative of it. And speaking of that, my only question is, is it the county crews alone that are still on that north part of Ponderosa, working on that, cutting that rest of that containment line in?
It's funny you say that. When we were up there Saturday morning, we did have a relief crew. Part of those were from Albuquerque, New Mexico. It's out-of-the-area crews, but the majority of that's Tulare County folks, yes.
Okay.
But it is a mixed bag. It's from geographic, all the way from Mexico to New Mexico to Oklahoma. And I think the South Carolina group is the farthest group from our fire, so.
Wow. Well, shout out to all those guys. And then again, thanks especially to the county crews for the yeoman's work on the job.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief. And I think that your comment about the firefighters coming from throughout the country really does reiterate the important note here, and that is the collaboration within your industry to protect life and property. I think we're so blessed to have so many dedicated people in the fire service. And thank you for leading this group in this horrific incident. This is definitely not a mark that we have to be proud of, the largest fire in the county's history. However, to be able to have preserved what was preserved and limit the damage is something that's truly commendable. So I, from a global perspective, appreciate all the regular updates and your frequent interaction in making sure that we are informed so that when we get constituent inquiries, we're able to respond, offering to take us up there to see the damage and see what a real forest fire is like up there is something that's very much appreciated as well. So stay safe, get some rest, and pass on our encouragement and words of thanks and appreciation to the men and women who are fighting up there.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all your support. Have a great day.
Okay, now we will move on to take on the additional public comments. At this time, the Board will entertain public comments. Public comments, canning will be limited to three minutes per speaker, and are to address items within the Board's jurisdiction, but not on today's agenda. At this time, I have a few public comment requests formally in front of me. The first item is for Pamela Silva. That was the first request I had.
Good morning again. Yes, my name is Pamela Silva. I'm here to update you guys on a little bit of stuff that I've been seeing around. And I'm not sure how much you guys know about what's going on with the registrar voter. So I was...
Can you speak into the microphone? Thank you.
Sorry, I'm challenged practically. Okay, start again, please. I had the opportunity to attend the training for poll workers by Michelle Baldwin and Suzette Machado. What I learned during that training is that the Secretary of State has given them guidelines to follow, but the guidelines aren't following established law. There's not going to be a list anymore of the voters. That's gone. That's in a law, and that's being undone. There's social distancing going to be enforced and mask wearing. And I understand we're under a pandemic, but to watch, to be a poll watcher, I have to be close enough to see and hear, to observe. And that isn't, that isn't going to be allowed. So I have concerns with that. The person who's going to take the temperature and monitor the line coming in, according to Michelle and Suzette, will be the assistant inspector. So you're going to take somebody out of their assigned position and make them monitor a line to take temperature and make sure everybody's wearing a mask. So I do have problems with that. And then let's get into, I'm not sure if you guys know, according to Devin Mathis, who gave me the information, there is a lawsuit against Newsom in Sutter County. And that is going to start happening in October. So that's exciting news. It's good news. And I want to thank Dennis Townsend, Kyler Crocker, for your good questions and your, you know, fight. And thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel, for you standing up and saying, yes, we're being treated badly. So, and another thing that you were saying about the child abuse, well, there's also elder abuse going on. We can't forget about the elderly who are being locked down and their family can't come visit them. So they're, you know, they are the other side of that, and they can be abused also. So I would like that to be mentioned also. And I'm not sure if they're going to mention it, but when you wanted, you were asking if anybody else had anything to say. Mandy Brown back there with the oxygen on, she wanted to add something to the question about the testing. She said that her driver, who is also here, was turned away because they didn't make an appointment. So that might be something we could look at also.
Thank you for your public comment.
Thank you.
Next, I have a request from Yua Lugo.
Good morning. My name is Sandy Brown, and I'm a care provider for eight years now. I live in Dennis Townsend District in Porterville. I just wanted to highlight that we put ourselves at risk every day to buy care for our clients. We're essential workers. Keep the elderly and disabled safe, comfortable in their own homes. This frees up the hospitals during this pandemic. We have worked diligently to keep these vulnerable people safe at home. We are risking our lives because we have to be out there shopping. Now, in stores, we're limited to one item per person. It's been really tough because now we have to do, make multiple trips. We're also picking up medicines and taking our clients to the hospitals, to their doctor appointments, any type of place they need to go to deal with their health and the air quality, and it all kind of puts a different act, too. We have always been the groups of workers with the greatest risk. I also want to address that home care providers save the state and county millions of dollars each year by doing our jobs. The majority of home care providers spend their hard-earned money here in Tulare County. We can't afford to go on vacation and spend our money anywhere else. We have also pushed the state to remove the 7% cut during this time. We have always tried our best to work with the state to bring money into our country, our county. We're asking our Board of Supervisors to understand that home care providers do their jobs with love and care. And if you have never been it, if you have never done the job that we cannot understand, that you never can understand the struggles we have, I am saddened to be here to have to beg this leadership for a livable wage. Do the right thing and prioritize our home care workers. And I appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you. Next public comment?
Good morning. My name is Richard E. Turey. I've been a home care provider for 10 years in District 2 and Councilman's, I mean Supervisor Vanderpoel. I'm also part of the bargaining team with SEIU 2015. I'm here today to say that I am disappointed in our Board of Supervisors who has not prioritized home care workers. We are deemed essential workers who save lives and money. It's really upsetting to see the Board would nickel and dime us. We are just asking for a living wage. We put ourselves at risk every day by providing care for our clients. I'm here today to ask the Board prioritize essential home care workers. We have been bargaining this contract for almost one year now. And we are very disappointed in the county's negotiator who spends several months questioning our proper name, SEIU Local 2015. This is a complete disrespect to our bargaining unit. We give our clients dignity and respect when we care for them. We ask that the elected leaders also treat us with dignity and respect. Minimum wage is disrespect to the work that we do. I ask the Board prioritize home care workers now. Thank you very much.
Additional public comments? Any phone comments this morning?
We do not have any.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will now close the public comment period and continue on with our agenda. We will now take up our 9:30 timed item, which is a public hearing, a request from the Solid Waste Department to consider an adjustment to the franchise hauler's maximum collection and ancillary rates for service areas A, B, C, D, E, G, H, and J in accordance with the calculation methodology set forth in the Tulare County franchise agreements. Public hearing is open.
Good morning. So we're here today to take a look at our annual rate increase for our franchise hauler agreements. So we entered into franchise hauler agreements about five years ago, and that was to provide services for all of the unincorporated area as Mr. Vanderpoel pointed out. Those franchise agreements go through an annual rate review process. A couple of years ago, we changed the rate review process to make it a more simpler process that's based on two indexes, one from San Francisco, one from Los Angeles. We take the average of those indexes, and we actually have our consultant HFNH do that for us. And based on that, last year, we came before you, and the rate increase at that time is capped at a 3%. So anything below, above 3% gets capped at 3%. So let's say, for an example, it was a 3.5% inflationary index, it'd be capped at 3, and that extra half percent rolls over to the next year. And it just keeps rolling, quite frankly, until the end of the agreement. So this year, once again, we come before you with a 3% rate increase. Actually, effectively, it becomes 2.55% on most of the services because they only get 85% of that 3% for most of their services because a good portion of their services has a pass-through portion that is disposal fees. And since we haven't raised the disposal fees, it keeps that portion at 2.55%. Normally, we come before you in the late spring, early summer for a July 1 timing for a rate increase. The haulers are supposed to get us their numbers by around April 1st or so. We get them approved, and we come before you. Because of COVID this year, because of the disruption in basically our industries entirely, they were not able to get that information to us in a timely manner. So we waited three months to come to you, thinking that would be a good timeframe. This rate increase is good from October 1st through July 1 of next year, where we'll go through the same process again. I can't tell you where inflation's going to be the next year. It seems like it's all over the map these days. I wouldn't be surprised if it's much lower. So that's what we're here to do, or here to ask you for, and have a public hearing on that increase.
Okay. Are there any questions from Board members? Go ahead Supervisor Valero.
Right. I have just two questions. The first one, and maybe you've shared this already, but do you know why we use a blended San Francisco, Oakland, Hayward CPI index and Los Angeles, Long Beach, Anaheim CPA index in our rate adjustment review?
Yes. So that, we had a different rate methodology that looked at maybe seven or eight different indexes that were all sort of nationally-based, labor indexes, fuel indexes, things like. Fairly complex process, which required us to spend quite a bit of money to figure that out. We went to the haulers and said, what would be a simpler process? And quite frankly, the Bay Area one has been going very high lately, and the Los Angeles one's a little lower. And we felt like that represented sort of the midpoint of the valley. Now, we are going to be talking to our haulers next week, starting negotiations on some amendments to our agreement to include some of the things that the Board has expressed they would like to see in the agreement. And I think in that process, we will probably bring before you some ideas on where we might go with rate increase models in the future.
Okay.
What we're trying to do is really represent what the industry is. We don't want to under-represent or over-represent. We want to give what's fair. And we felt like that blend was fair. Well, we did that back in 2018. It's been three years now, so it's a good time to take a look at it and see if that's still a fair representation of their costs.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then I will add a disclaimer to my next question because I know that we have experienced COVID, and there's been a lot of challenges and a lot of challenges and changes to that. But I will begin by saying, last year, I did encourage your department to increase the number of dump days, community service cleanups, in addition to an education component to help alleviate some of the strain on our residents, especially during this time. So how has your department worked with these haulers to bring this into the fold? And although my colleagues might not agree on this next statement that I'll be sharing, but even if it means having the county absorb some of these one-time costs associated with these activities?
So that's a really good, great question. Thank you. Honestly, we haven't done much. And part of that reason is we needed to amend our agreement to ask them to do more. There's costs associated with each one of those. And certainly, some of our haulers have reached out to us on the public education portion and asked us where we can participate more in that. So we'll be coming to you probably over the next three to six months. So we'll be coming to you probably over the next three to six months, looking for an additional headcount to incorporate new regulations around 1383, but also to do some of that work ourselves.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Are there additional questions or comments from Board members? Any public comments from individuals who are present in the room? Any phone comments on this item, Madam Clerk? We do not have any. Okay. At this time, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the Board for discussion and action. Supervisor Crocker?
Thank you. I had a, I did have some questions, but I think you kind of spoke on some of them. I recognize that, you know, we've tried to do some things to make life a little bit easier for residents and businesses during the pandemic. And so one of the questions was, you know, are, do we have any options for some type of rate relief, recognizing that? But I think you, actually, I didn't really think about it, but when you stated it just now, recognizing that normally, we would have had these rates in place July 1st. So we did give a rate relief of some sorts for the first quarter of this fiscal year. So I, I do kind of appreciate that, that, you know, I think there's actually a benefit for most that there's, for residents, that there, there's a little bit of a rate relief for the first three months of this fiscal year. I would just reiterate the dump days. I think we've talked about it, you know, it's a community cleanups. I think those are, I've been involved with several in the past and I, they've been tremendously successful. Whether that, you know, I recognize there's probably some amendments. And I would say that, you know, we have at our disposal franchise fees and different things. And, you know, if that means, you know, taking it a few bucks out of the reserve for solid waste, I don't know that they're going to be huge cost drivers, depending on how many we're talking about and what the frequency is. But I think that that's probably doable within where our current revenues look at. It's just a matter of shifting around. And then how much, I guess, the one question is, how much are organics playing into rates? Is that a huge, is that a large contributing factor? I know diesel costs aren't necessarily as far as this year, and that has been in the past as far as what some of the rate drivers are. But how does organics play into that?
I would think, I would think the haulers would say that the organics and the recycling piece has been the main driver since our disposal pieces stay consistent. We haven't raised rates. So, I mean, this is an inflationary index, which really doesn't take a lot of that into account. If you look at what CPI is driven by, it's primarily housing costs and labor costs. This is supposed to reflect what their true costs are. Now, we did do an adjustment, as you remember, back in January of this year for recycling, 3% adjustment. I would anticipate them coming to us during this period where we'll be negotiating with them, looking at an organics increase of some sort.
And so I, I'm, even though I know that it's tough and it's difficult, but I am supportive of it, recognizing that there's these large looming costs that are impacting, they're already impacting our haulers right now. And it's, they're not recouping all those costs. And this is something that all businesses are hurting. And that, big or small, and we've got everywhere in between from our haulers, from small local guys to some of our larger nationwide companies. And I don't think there's, there's a whole lot of difference as far as they're all providing similar services. Thank you.
Thanks for the presentation. I know that there's an awful lot of mandate that's coming down to the solid waste industry that's consistently driving costs upwards. I know that we have some good collaboration, I feel like, here locally. Whenever we do request, or whenever I have requested, that community cleanup days and the local haulers, whether they're the corporate sort or the local sort, have been very willing to come to the table to help and put forth these community events and community cleanups and really help advance the cleanliness of these unincorporated communities. So I'm appreciative of our haulers, also cognizant of this increase ultimately being passed on to the consumer. That's unfortunate, especially during these economic times. But unfortunately, due to the mandates that are coming down on this industry, I don't think haulers are really left with any other choices but to come to the county requesting an increase. And the county, because we run this system, are in the position to grant these increases to help them stabilize and weather the storm being sent their way from Sacramento. So it's very unfortunate.
Several of our, I guess, groups that represent the industry have gone to Sacramento and asked for relief from the new regulations that are coming. And so far, we have not gotten any positive messages from Sacramento in that regard.
Well, if they have any luck getting anything positive out of Sacramento, let us know. Maybe we'll try asking them about COVID sometime and see what kind of relief they can send our way there and help us to reopen. But anyways, Chair will entertain direction. We have a motion by Supervisor Crocker, a second by Supervisor Shucklin. Please vote. Motion passes 5-0 unanimous. Thank you for that presentation. Next, we are going to move on and take up our consent calendar, which also includes the addendum. On the consent calendar, I believe the item 12 is going to be removed for separate consideration. And are there any additional items that Board members would like to comment or pull for separate consideration as well, members of the public? I know Supervisor Crocker has a request.
I just think there's a minor correction on the contract for item 36 that needs to be corrected.
Okay.
If there's no other else, I'd be happy to move to approve the balance with and have staff make that correction on the contact, on the signature.
Okay, so the balance of consent, you want to pull 36 or do you just want to have?
No, I don't think it needs, it's a minor correction.
All right, so item 12 is pulled for separate consideration. The balance is entertained at this time and moved for approval by Supervisor Crocker, second by Supervisor Townsend. Please vote. Motion passes 5-0 unanimous. Next, we're going to take up item 12. This item is a request to approve a resolution to disclaim any and all interests historically and for all time, the property commonly known as the Allensworth Historical Cemetery. Do we have, John is coming up to do a brief staff presentation. And I believe we have a public comment on the phone for that after that.
Yes, that's right, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. As you described, this is a legal process associated with the quiet title action to suggest that we are not interested in managing the property. So really, the Friends of Allensworth and Allensworth CSD are taking the lead.
Okay. All right, so public comment?
Good morning. Thank you for holding. You are now connected to the board meeting. Please state your name and address for the record. Your three minutes will begin now.
My name is Denise Kadara. My address is 8234 Avenue 32 in Allensworth, California. And I would like to just acknowledge the fact that we are in support of this effort that is being put before the county Board of Supervisors today. We have had a long history with this cemetery and are now feel we're in a position to transition it over to our community. We thank Supervisor Vanderpool for his support in helping to initiate and make it possible. And, and we look forward to the opportunity to complete the program, to complete this process. So we ask the county Board of Supervisors to support the resolution that's before them today.
All right, thank you for that comment. Are there additional public comments?
Yes, we have an additional. Good morning. Thank you for holding. You are now connected to the board meeting. Please state your name and address for the record. Your three minutes will begin now. Are you there?
Yes. Hello?
Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, my name is Johanna Bracy of Los Angeles, California. Good morning, members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm here as a representative of the Piero family to raise some concerns that we have regarding this recent activity related to the Allensworth Historical Cemetery. It's come to our attention, of course, that the county intends to disclaim all interest in the Allensworth Historical Cemetery. And we respectfully request two things. One, that the county make no divestiture efforts until the property may be transferred to an appropriate entity. And two, that we be included as active stakeholders in any discussions or actions concerning the ownership and maintenance of the cemetery. While we agree that it is desirable that a local entity ultimately have control of the cemetery, no such entity currently has legal authority to acquire it. The Friends of Allensworth and the Allensworth Community Services District are apparently working toward eventually acquiring the property. But the county acknowledges that it may take a number of years and there's no guarantee of a successful acquisition. The county's divestiture of the property would thus leave the cemetery in limbo with respect to jurisdiction and maintenance. It also appears that the county's motion today to divest the property fails to comply with California Health and Safety Code 8131, which specifies that the cemetery will remain under the county Board of Supervisors jurisdiction and control so long as it is not owned by another appropriate entity. We believe our family has an interest in this process of assigning and maintaining conservatorship of the cemetery. For context, the Piero family has resided in Allensworth for nearly 70 years and were the longest standing continuous resident in the town's history. We also have five family members buried at the Allensworth Historical Cemetery and have invested significant time and resources in maintaining the cemetery over the years, including cleaning it up and installing fencing around it. It is also our understanding that multiple Buffalo soldiers are buried in the cemetery, which further contributes to its community and historic value. We strongly urge the county not to disclaim the Allensworth Historical Cemetery and we encourage the county to continue to maintain the current jurisdiction over the property until a suitable transferee organization is available. We also request that the county include us in the ongoing discussions about the cemetery. In so doing, the county can ensure that no ownership or jurisdictional questions arise and that the cemetery is properly maintained for our loved ones buried there and for the rest of the community. Thank you.
So, real quick, Hannah, are there any additional public comments?
Yes, we do have additional.
Madam Clerk? I was just going to take in all the public comments first.
Good morning. Thank you for holding. You are now connected to the board meeting. Please state your name and address for the record. Your three minutes will begin now.
Good morning. My name is Anne Williams. We are representing the Friends of Allensworth. Our principal office is located at 2400 March Avenue, Bakersfield, California. And the Friends of Allensworth would like to make the statement that we are taking custody of the Allensworth Historic Cemetery to protect it until the town of Allensworth, ACSD in particular, can obtain custody of it. Thank you. We appreciate. Have a good day.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you for holding. You are now connected to the board meeting. Please state your name and address for the record. Your three minutes will begin now.
My name is Sherri Hunter. My address is 8236 Avenue 32, Allensworth, California. And I am the Board President of the Allensworth Community Service District. And I just want to thank Supervisor Vanderpool for giving us the opportunity as a community to take control of the Allensworth Historical Cemetery. It's been such a hard fight to even have the opportunity to go out and revitalize it. And I just want to thank Supervisor Vanderpool for giving us this opportunity. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes public comment.
Okay, I will close the public comment period and now bring it to staff to respond.
Sure. So I think I've called up Jeff Kuhn, Deputy County Counsel over here, or Chief Deputy County Counsel, to, for the record, clarify the county's position with respect to the property presently, that we don't own it. So there's nothing to divest in it right now. So it gets a little legal tricky, so I think Jeff could do a better job than I could.
Thank you. Jeff Kuhn, Chief Deputy County Counsel. That is correct. The county does not own the property. We really have no control over the property. As you recall, the property is owned by, or the title is in a community, really a community cemetery board that was put in place over 100 years ago, thereabouts. Those folks, when those folks passed away, there were no successors in interest and the property has kind of fallen into limbo ever since. And working with the community, we were able to put together the, at least a process by which we can try to get the property into the hands of the community so that they can be in control of what happens in the future. They want to revitalize it, use it as a historical cemetery. There's some thought that they may eventually be in a position to have it become an active cemetery. There, as you, Board members will recall, periodically, there's interest in touring folks out there from the community. And so this process, again, what you're being asked to do today is part of the process of being able, of us being able to go into court on behalf of the community to try to quiet title ownership of the property in the Friends of Allensworth so that they can work with the Community Services District ultimately to take over ownership and operation of the property going forward. So this, this is in keeping with that effort. It will help facilitate us being able to be successful in court to get the property into their hands.
So in no way is this action by the Board here today going to leave this cemetery completely in limbo again, so to speak. This is an effort undertaken to get the cemetery owning or title into the hands of a more local body in the Community Services District ultimately.
That's exactly right. The property is already in limbo. It's been in limbo for many, many years. So this, this really is moving the ball forward.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Anything further, John?
Comments? Thank you.
Supervisor Crocker?
So just for clarification, it's, it's currently in private hands or private entity, even though you say it's limbo, but it's not, the county doesn't have the deed.
Correct.
It's in some other entity, individuals that are no longer around, but it is.
That is, that is correct.
Right. Okay.
All right. And I just want to thank staff and I want to thank county council really for taking this ball and running with it. It's been providing legal services and assistance free of charge to help do this and to get this done for the community. And I think that's been very noble. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Chair will entertain a motion on this item. A motion by Supervisor Shucklin, second by Supervisor Townsend. Please vote. Motion passes 5-0 unanimous. We will now move on and take up item 38 on our untimed, I'm sorry, 39 on our untimed portion of our meeting agenda. Request from the Health and Human Services Agency to approve the acceptance of funds from the California Department of Public Health for the epidemiology laboratory capacity enhancing detection in an amount not to exceed $8,500,000 for, you go ahead and finish it. in an amount not to exceed $8,500,000 for, you go ahead and finish it. Karen?
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chair, Board, County Counsel, CAO. Yes, I'm here today. We received a funding letter August 11th from the state for the epidemiology and laboratory capacity-enhancing detection funding. It is for the amount of $8.5, just a little over that, million dollars. There are six strategies that are attached to it. This, we actually had initially had like close to a $6 million funding, but again, being in our Central Valley, they had increased it so that we could enhance some of the surveillance and outreach to the community. So, I just wanted to kind of go over all the strategies so you have an understanding of where these monies will be spent. The timeframe for it is two and a half years. It's from May 18th, 2020 through November 17th, 2022. Strategy one is to enhance laboratory and surveillance workforce capacity. So, this will use largely for assisting and funding some of the staffing in the lab, such as a microbiologist, a lab assistant, medical office assistant, also some of the administrative support to pull some of the data and findings and assist them, and some management over that staff. Strategy two is to enhance and strengthen public health laboratories. In this, we have a lot of equipment and supplies that we're looking for. We want to implement and expand serology and molecular testing methodologies. We will acquire equipment, ancillary supplies, and evaluate opportunities to implement sequencing techniques. There is also opportunity in there for renovation of building and workspace. So, it will assist in any redesign of the lab and also to fix a leaky root that we've had for quite a while. So, it's nice to have the funding to cover that. Strategy three is to advance electronic data exchange. So, we are going to implement an interface and system to system connections with internal and external partners. Strategy four, explore and expand data analysis visualization reporting. We'd like to add depth to our epidemiology area. There is request in here for an additional epidemiologist. And we do have two extraordinary epidemiologists that work for us now, Sharon and Kirsty. And Tim brings a lot of information and data up to you, and it's from the extrapolation that they do. They will be very big on this health metric index, our health equity metric, just based on, you know, looking at the census tracts, but not just the census tracts in terms of the average of the fourth quartile, but actually the communities that maybe are the highest so that we can start to maybe, you know, look at them and show that we are working to make an impact in those areas. They work around the clock. They have been putting it in. And epidemiologists also in terms of, again, our regular public health type of surveillance that we need in terms of with the flu season come on, on looking at the influenza levels and also just STD rates and all of that. So, adding one would hugely benefit the department. Strategy five is a large one, and we actually have a lot of partners that were going to help fund through this. In the consent calendar, you actually did already approve the QIA Delta. It was about a $2.9 million request to enhance all of their capacity and expansion. Two millions of that was in the CARES Act funding that has already been covered, but there is another almost additional million dollars in this that we're going to assist them with. But there's also the Family Healthcare Network, mobile testing, Proteus for the contact tracing, Valley Health Team and Inuba that actually is expanding in terms of testing. Tulare County Offices of Education, we want to provide some funding to assist them as the teachers do go back and they need to expand their testing. United Health Centers for Lab Testing and ARIA Health Center. So, those are some of the partners that make up $1.9 million of this area. We also do want to hire a health education specialist that will help with the Cal Ready System and the Cal Connect. And again, that is what pulls in a lot of the data that we get from testing. And so, extrapolating that and again, seeing where some of, to do more of the analysis in terms of where are the areas that we're hitting that have outbreaks and getting out and doing more outreach with them. And strategy six is to coordinate and engage with partners. It's specific to infection prevention, so they really want us to work with the skilled nursing facilities. So, we actually have a nurse that we will try to bring on that we'd like to basically get them through training, bring them in as our infection preventionist, because I think this will carry on beyond this. Anytime it's flu season anyway, if a skilled nursing facility does have outbreaks, we usually use our PHNs to assist with them. In this instance, obviously, when we had the outbreaks with COVID, we really needed that assistance to work with the state, but plus as a partner here and liaison with the skilled nursing facility. So, we're going to bring someone on that will be specific to that. Plus, we'd like to have a health education assistant again in terms of, you know, just the coordination and care of all of them. So, there are three staff that we are asking for in this also, FTE-wise. An epidemiologist, a health education specialist, a health education assistant. Recognizing that we're bringing on more people than known in the future, how are we going to fund them? This will fund it for a couple of years, but we do feel that again, in all of these classifications that we're looking for, public health uses them in all of our programs. It's really the engagement in the community that we use them for. The epidemiologists, the use of them and the need for them has grown through the years. And so, anytime we can actually get a position but actually fill it with someone who, you know, has those capabilities is a big win for us. So, do you have any questions?
Any questions or comments from Supervisor Crocker?
Yeah. Thank you, Karen, for that. A lot of good stuff going on. Just a point of clarification, or I know that it says in the letter from CDPH that this is a reimbursement for the Paycheck Protection Program, but this is not really the, this is not the actual, the PPP that businesses could receive. That's just, is that just part of the name for the act?
It is. I think the federal, it's a huge thing, but this is part of, I think, the funding that it falls under. But no, not with the businesses.
Right. So, I guess that was initially, my question was how we received Paycheck Protection Program for our clinic, and it, we did not.
No.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Townsend?
Yeah. Thank you, Karen, for that, for that presentation. And you said, and you said three, there's four positions, right?
There's three. I, there was an update. Initially, I'd asked for a PHN, but we pulled that out because we have what we can fill. That was probably an extra that we felt was not necessary.
Okay. Do you know why this is for two and a half years, and specifically for COVID?
I mean, I know that, again, they're trying to assist our communities and counties and local health jurisdictions and continuing to fight through it. I can't give you the reason why they picked this time period, but I do feel that they feel that this is, again, as we continue to fight the pandemic, have the vaccines that come through. I should add this also. One of the things that we have in here are the low-temperature freezers that we want to get. So, when we do get the vaccine, I think we do have that in here also. But understanding it's an ongoing issue, so even when the vaccine is out, how long will COVID stick around? So, I think, again, it's that infection prevention. It's working with those communities or workforces that are impacted. And the length was the state's decision.
Yeah. And that was kind of the base of the question was that, was, because it looks like the vaccine, I mean, depending on who you're listening to, the vaccine could be as early as November, could be as late as the middle of next year, but kind of nobody's thinking it's going to be a year or two before we get there. And yet, and so that was one of the things is what we'll do. Let's say it's six months from now, and we get the freezers, we get, you know, we have the people that can do it, and then, and then we're done for all intents and purposes with the COVID response. I know there'll be additional, I know every year there's a new something, new virus, a new flu, something that we get. So, but it just seemed, will we be able to still, will this funding still apply? Let's say the vaccine does come out in the earlier part, portion, and we get it all, we get everybody that wants to be vaccinated, and will it still apply then if we're only six months into the funding?
I would, I would hope it'd still apply, but even when the vaccine comes out, you know, they're going to have a priority list. So, it's going to be, again, first responders or line healthcare workers. And so, we're going to get it at sporadic times. So, it's going to be, I think, the rollout of vaccine, even though we have it initially, the actual rollout to be able to vaccinate everybody is going to take, could take a couple of years.
You think the vaccine will take a couple of years?
To vaccinate everybody in terms of the supply and everything. I don't know if it would take that long. I'm just saying it's going to take quite a bit of time just to even roll that out completely.
Okay. Because my understanding was that they were already producing all of the different potentials so that once it's ready to roll, that they, we get hit with millions and millions and millions of them, and that we can do it pretty quickly if we can actually do the distribution.
Yeah.
We won't have the, supposedly we won't have the supply chain wait for the vaccinations. We'll just, it'll just be a matter of the distribution.
And I guess, again, it has to do with, you know, the amount, how fast they can manufacture it and the population of not just the United States, of, you know, the world in terms of getting it out. And so, again, the rollout could take longer than, you know, months. And I don't know. I mean, this is.
I know, I know. I know. I'm more of a statement than a question, probably. All right. Thanks, Karen.
All right. Mr. CAO?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to call to the board's attention just a correction. There was a correction to the agenda after publication where they struck the public health nurse. So, it is three positions, just so that the board is clear on what they're voting on.
All right. And just a comment that I'll make. I think that public health has been very comprehensive with this item and really looking at all different areas that can be concerning and really can maximize the use of this investment. So, I'm appreciative of this, and I think, again, it's just from a global perspective, the state offering to help, but then holding us back in so many other ways is a bit frustrating to me. And while I will not turn this away because I know of the benefit that it can generate, I think that it's important to acknowledge the fact that this is coming to us. This is aid. This is assistance. But at the same time, we're being thwarted and held back in so many other ways through changing state policy, and I just think it's important to make that point. Supervisor Townsend?
Yeah, I'm sorry. And Karen, this isn't even directed at you. I was just going to make it as a general comment. Same as you just said, Mr. Chair, that you don't want to turn anything away. It is very interesting that the state is still holding a large portion of our CARES funds somewhere, somewhere in the neighborhood between CARES and Realimac, in the neighborhood of $50 million, $49 million maybe. But they're pretty, pretty active with sending these funds out. So, it's just very interesting and adds to the frustration of trying to get them to release those that were allocated for us, but instead, they're real happy to give us these funds. So, we'll take it. The one other thing, though, that I did want to mention is that we did institute a hiring freeze a little while back, and we also eliminated vacant, chronically vacant positions. And so, this will be adding three positions, although it's, although they're subsidized. We also have a, we also have a policy that we use a one-time fund for a, to, for a one-time event. And so, there is included in this that these positions would continue potentially or be absorbed somehow. So, I think that's something that we need to consider, that if things go well and we're done in six months, or we're done in a year, or we're done in nine months, whatever it is, that we're going to have three positions that we have to think about that are out there. Thank you.
Okay. Any additional comments, questions? If not, the board, the chair will entertain a direction. Motion by Valero, seconded by Shucklian. Please vote.
Supervisor Shucklian, can you vote again?
Motion passes. Five oh unanimous. We will now move on, take up item 40. Board members, we make a referral to staff to have a matter of business considered for a future agenda. Are there any such requests? Supervisor Townsend?
Yeah, I have two that I'd like us to look at. One, I know that we're already, we've already taken some measures to address the state and the feds about the disaster relief for the SQF complex fire. So, just wanted to add to that, that we have some, that we take it up urgently, aggressively. If there's any letters, additional letters that need to be written, any other advocacy that needs to happen, I'd like to see us take that up as a board, as a whole board. And thank you for that. I know everybody's on board with it, and we're already doing it, but I just wanted to add to it. The second is, and really based on a lot of the things that we were talking about today with the state and the moving of the, of the metrics and the frustration that we're experiencing and the extra work that we're having our HHSA employees, our department, do. And the fact that if we were using the same metrics that we started out with, that we would be further along than we are now, and we're probably going to find out today that we're going to take another step backwards through no fault of anyone in the county. I'd like us to do a resolution similar to what Kern County presented to the state, that it is a demand for clarification. I think the way they worded theirs was a resolution demanding increased clarity, consistency, and continuity in state directives related to COVID-19. So, I'd like us to look at an example of a resolution like that. And if, if we're willing, or if we are in agreement on that, to maybe pass, or to put that on for next week's agenda, if possible, so that we can get it as soon as possible to the state. Thank you.
All right. Are there any additional requests? All right. Seeing none, I will look to county council, see if we have need for closed session.
Yes, Mr. Chair, there is a need for closed session. Item A is off calendar, and we will be hearing the balance of the calendar in closed session, and I do anticipate an announcement now.
Okay. And we do have, yeah, we do have our two o'clock timed item that we will be taking up at that time. So, we will adjourn to closed session until our two o'clock timed item will be heard. Thank you for attending today's morning session, and we'll see you this afternoon.
Jennifer Flores announcing out for closed session, item C. The Board of Supervisors authorized legal counsel to defend and tender the defense to applicant's counsel in the case of Terabella Voice for Change, V. County of Tulare at all. Tulare County Superior Court Case VCU 284345. The adverse party is Terabella Voice for Change. This case involves a challenge to the county's approval of an addendum to the Terabella Community Plan Initial Study slash mitigated negative declaration in connection with the expansion of the Sutton Pistachio Facility in Terabella. The roll call vote was on motion by Supervisor Dennis Townsend, seconded by Supervisor Kyler Crocker, and approved five zero. Reporting out for a closed session, item G. The Board of Supervisors directed legal counsel to defend in the case of Iftimi Mara versus Tulare County, Tulare County Superior Court Case Number VCU 283987. The adverse party is Mara Iftimi. This case involves a former employee seeking judicial review of the denial of her application for service-connected disability retirement. The roll call vote was made upon motion of Supervisor Amy Shucklian, seconded by Supervisor Dennis Townsend, and approved five zero.
Good afternoon. Thank you for joining us for the afternoon session of today's board meeting. We will now take up item seven, which is a two o'clock timed item, a public forum, a request to conduct a public forum in accordance with Government Code Section 7283 dot one. Request to receive a report from the County Administrative Office regarding the Tulare County Sheriff's interaction and communication with the United States Immigration and Customs Enforcement in 2019. We will also receive a public comment. I will now turn this over. We actually do have a Spanish interpreter available for this matter, if that is needed. Do we have any requests for that here today? We do not have any requests, and we will go ahead and begin the forum and have our CAO lead the presentation.
Jason Britt, County Administrator. So, I will start with our presentation. We do have a brief presentation, providing statistics from 2019.
providing statistics from 2019 for AB 2972, the Truth Act. So the Tulare County Probation Department pursuant to AB 2972 and Government Code Section 7283.1D, the department has not provided ICE access for the purposes of civil immigration enforcement. We'll now move on to AB 2972 statistics for the Sheriff's Department. The total bookings for 2019, the Tulare County Sheriff's Office had approximately 21,062 bookings in 2019. The Sheriff's Office received 424 detainer requests from immigration officials representing 0.020% of total bookings. Custodial release information for 51 individuals was provided to immigration officials representing a 0.002% of total bookings. The Sheriff's Office received, again, just stating, restating in the summary format, 424 detainer requests from ICE. Subsequently, ICE took custody of 51 inmates upon release, and the Sheriff's Office did not provide ICE access to 373 inmates. The 373 inmates not released to ICE, 109 requests did not meet the legal requirements of the Values Truth Acts, and the Sheriff's Office did not allow ICE access to the inmates. 264 requests from ICE satisfied the legal requirements of the Values Truth Acts, but ICE did not take custody of the inmates. 231 of these inmates were released back to the public consistent with operating procedures and the Values Truth Acts. 33 inmates were still in custody pending trial or serving their sentences at the end of 2019. The 33 inmates that were in custody on charges, were in custody on charges ranging from murder, serious sex offenses, and other serious crimes. That concludes my report. Mr. Chair?
All right. Any questions of our CAO? Okay. This is a public forum. I will now take public comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per speaker. And should there be translation necessary, the time limit will be extended to five minutes per speaker. Are there any public comment requests in person? Seeing none, do we have any phone comment requests, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chair, we do not.
We do not have any phone comment requests. Okay. I will now close the public comment portion of this forum and bring it back to the board for any final comments or action, if any. This is not an action item.
There's no action.
So I can go ahead and conclude this agenda item. Thank you for participating in our afternoon session of today's board meeting. Counsel, do we have need for closed session?
No, Mr. Chair, there's no need for closed session.
Okay. Seeing that closed session items were heard and no further need, this meeting is adjourned to next week. Thank you very much, and stay healthy and safe.